Not a one person, which is good, so I had to kind of go myself.
Yeah, this is not being broadcast, it's just Mr. Stoker is zooming in, but we're not broadcasting.
Okay, super. So, roll call, please. Alison Humark, Commissioner Westle, Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner Lautner all present. And we'll have a pledge of allegiance if you will join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. Thank you. And I staff, I think we can have our moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, for the agenda, is there anything anyone would like to add or delete?
No, but I know all three of you have commitments, so we made a vow we're going to be done no later than 11:45.
Perfect.
11:30 is possible because all three of you have things to go to.
Yep, yep, that'll be our goal, to be done at 11:45. If not, we'll move on. Any public comment this morning from anyone? I see none. Okay, so the first thing this morning is approval of the minutes from the March 23rd meeting. Anything, anyone?
The March 23rd?
Yes.
I know that we approved the minutes from Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022.
Four.
Okay, a motion for, no hands for discussion, all in favor, say aye. Pose same. Okay, 3-0, approval of those minutes. Okay, the legal opinion review, we have Attorney David Stoker on Zoom.
Yeah, let me give you an update. And David, thank you for joining us here, we appreciate this. So, as you know, at our last meeting, you received a copy of the legal opinion dated March 22nd, it's in your packets there, from Bonnie Toski, which is a partner in the law firm, and several questions, points of clarification came forward. And so, we actually set up a meeting with the treasurer, the register of deeds, the clerk and myself, with Mr. Stoker and Ms. Toski. It was a telephone call, just to try to get more answers, which we said we'd do at our last meeting. So, we did that. And then, I thought, this is a very complex issue, and so I thought it'd be helpful to have David join us. So, thank you once again, David, for joining us here. And let me try to kind of walk you through it. And John and Jen, if you have any comments or questions, free of, well, under Sheriff Kiesel also, just want to have a dialogue. So, the issue surfaced last January about the pay for the chief deputies. And that means the chief deputies for the clerk, register of deed, treasurer, it also impacts the sheriff, the undersheriff, and the chief assistant prosecutor. They're all elected officials, and they have either chief deputies or second-in-command or undersheriff. So, the question came up, and I'm trying to try to walk you through it, and David, I'm sure will do a great job explaining this. So, when it comes to elected officials, during the term of office, so currently that'd be January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2025.
Four.
I'm sorry, 24, yes, thank you. Yes, yes. Those salaries are set, and if there's a resignation in any of those people, the person coming in has to be at the same salary. One of the points that Mr. Stoker and Ms. Toski pointed out is, we may have a legal issue with our chart, where we have people start, and then we have year one, year two, year three, year four. That's very rare for counties. Most counties have a set salary for, it doesn't matter who's in the position. So, if you're a sheriff, whether you have 10 years' experience or one-year experience, this is the salary. And that's true for all elected officials. The board does have the option, prior to the new term, to make adjustments downwards. They can make adjustments up at any time. So, just like here, every year there's a cost of living, this year was 3.25, so all the elected officials are eligible to get that also. So, if one of the elected officials resigns during that four-year term of office, whoever gets appointed has to be at the same salary, even if they have no experience, for example. One of the things Mr. Stoker is recommending, and if you go to the last page here on this thing, is that we switch to a one-step salary for elected officials. So, if you look at this proposal, these are the current salaries for the, for the people that are elected, which is the drain commissioner, prosecutor, sheriff, clerk, treasurer, and register of deeds. The only one that is not at the top of the scale is register of deeds, because when her predecessor resigned, she was at the top of the scale. Jen came in, it was a step two?
I came in at one.
Yeah, because it was a new term, technically that's legal.
So, as register of deeds, you came in at 69.108?
Yeah.
Jen, you want me to jump in and kind of?
Yeah, I was just going to turn it over to you, I gave an overview. Yeah, so everyone but the register of deeds came in and is at the top of the scale currently, with the exception of Jen. And so, David, do you want to talk about your concern about our step system here?
Now, what the statute, while your system makes sense, is not consistent with statutes, that's the problem, right? The statute for sending county officer positions, and that could be the elected and the chief deputy, there actually could be some other people in their office, but the main ones are dealing with here the chiefs of the race office. The statute provides that the board commissioners is to annually set their salary each and every. So, essentially what you're saying is what can be done in year to year. And Jen is correct, and both the statute and the Constitution says that you cannot then reduce the salary during the term of office. That has been interpreted by both the courts and the legislature in general. This mean that you cannot, well, you would basically have a vacancy for a resignation or death or whatever in any of these offices. You cannot reduce the level it's at when the replacement comes in. So, the statute really envision annual salary being set, and then, again, that it's going to be a salary, and rather than a step system. And again, if you're like, the treasurer is at the top step. And John Vincenzo, obviously, tomorrow, the replacement would have to be at the same salary he had, and you can't reduce it until the beginning of the next term. So, that affects a couple of things, the way you've done it. It affects the steps, and that you can't put the person, even if they is the first year back, step one, that need to continue the replacement at the level that the person left, but at least until the beginning of the next term, in this case, called January 2025.
Okay, David?
Again, it's to be set annually, so then what you do second year, third year, fourth year, you can set it pretty wide, as long as it's not going down.
So, David, our cost of, I'm sorry, so our, every year, sometimes we do it in November, sometimes in December, we do adjustment. This year was 3.25, that's perfectly legal. The board has the right to adjust those salaries up on an annual basis.
Yeah, what the statute says is that you're supposed to do it each and every. But the courts have held that you can move it up as many times and anytime you want. So, essentially, the courts have essentially rewritten the statute, if you will. And so, you can go up at any time, you can never go down, at least until the beginning of the next term.
Okay.
That's sort of the ground rules we have to deal with. And that obviously creates a lot of problems when you have a step system.
Yeah.
Because you sort of create a step system, saying this is the salary for the next full term, for the next four years. But you can't tie it to how many years they've been with us. It's, and you can't reduce it if a new person comes in, or what is being paid on the person's deed.
Okay, could you address the register of deeds situation? Her, the current register of deeds came in at year two. The prior register of deeds was at the top of the scale. However, as I understand, that was legitimate because the board made the adjustment at the end of the previous budget year. So, when Jen took office on January 1st, 2021, that adjustment was made during the budget process, and that legally is fine, technically?
Chief, you said?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not the chief, I'm sorry. I meant the register of deeds, yeah.
The chief register of deeds?
Well, we have register of deeds, and we have?
Register of deeds, too.
Yes.
I came in at the start.
Yeah.
Because a new term?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the beginning of the terms, we were okay reducing it at that point, on what was being paid in the prior one. But you can never go down from that, you can go up from that.
Yeah.
And you sort of, you're basically adopted a scale line up every year now, and you can't lower that scale, so you can raise that scale at any time.
Okay.
The statute does not envision steps, it envisions a annual salary being reviewed and set each year. First of all, I guess you actually move the budget process, but it's essentially suggesting you do that.
Let's stop this. Do the three commissioners have any questions about that? So, basically, what you're recommending that we do is we modify our non-uni pay scale, and for the elected officials, have one salary step, correct, David?
Yes, and then you would, each year you would need to, and I guess normally you would do that in part of the budget process.
Yeah.
We then review it. And even though it's since November, the only caveat I believe I have of that is that I think it's probably a good practice, when you do get to the end of the term, to try to set that salary before people finally nominate you.
Yeah.
So, when they, when they get elected, they go where they're getting, what they're getting in for, basically. Technically, the statute doesn't say that, it says November, future.
Well, I think going forward, since we have three-year labor contracts, we usually make the salary adjustment during the budget process. So, I'm guessing in 2020, for the 2023 budget and 2024 budget, since we have labor contracts, those adjustments will be made during the budget process and approved in October. So, I think we're fine there. But what you're recommending?
And that will be the next term, from you guys, too, from you.
The new commissioners, yes.
So, possibly, they got that one.
Yeah, but as of now, which is basically, if I can summarize, is that all elected officials, if you look at the last page here, we have revised salaries based on what David's telling us, with one salary for all the elected officials. Right now, I just want to?
You can hand that out here, or?
Yeah, you have, you should.
It's under the minutes. Did you get your minutes?
I had the minutes from, that were sent out, but I didn't get that.
Oh, okay, I thought you did. I thought I put them under. Yes.
Me, by the way.
Thank you.
So, really, the only question there is the register of deeds here, because currently she is not at the top of the pay scale. Legally, where she at is technically fine, but she's not at the top of the pay scale. So, until, in the past always, the register of deeds, the clerk and the treasurer have been on the same compensation scale. But because we have veteran members at the clerk and the treasurer's office, as the elected officials, they are getting paid 75, 701, where the register of deeds is at 77, 97. So, the option is, you could legally keep her at the 77, 97. You could also move her to the top, is where the prior register of deeds was, at 75, it should be 75, 701, 57.
Are you saying that all elected officials then would be at the same?
No, they'd be where they at now.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at this, this is where they all are obsessed with register of deeds.
Gotcha.
She's the only one.
We have some disparities. We have, we're talking about, if you look at the three, which for some reason they're, they're long. The clerk, register of deeds, and the treasurer have, that's what Jen's saying.
Have been the same. The rest are separate, yeah.
Yeah, and then the prosecutor used to be, but some years ago, they raised that up. So, he's, he's way up there. And then, and was the sheriff also at one time the same? I remember that got, it got raised up at one point when the undersheriff was making more than the sheriff or something. So, that got raised up, I know, but maybe he wasn't the same. So, those three. And what we have is the disparity because Jen started at start instead of?
If you take the person out of it, this register of deeds is making less than the prior register of deeds. In several years, this register would be at the same, but not currently.
Happened in the past with the sheriff, too.
So, to modify the pay for the elected officials to one step would not impact anyone except for the register of deeds. So, legally, you have a choice of keeping her where she is now, or you can move her to the top of the pay scale, would be at the same as the clerk and the treasurer, which has been the case for many years.
So, but I have a question, David. When you said this has to be set annually, technically, it is. When we do our budget, we get this form, and we review where everybody is, and then we approve our budget in October. So, technically, I guess we, we are setting them annually. But we're using the step process, which you say isn't the best way to go.
Yeah, for example, if, as David pointed out, let's just, I mean, it doesn't matter, let's just say the treasurer did win the lotto and left. Whoever is appointed as the treasurer during his term has to be at the top, has to be at the same salary as the current treasurer. And that holds true for every elected official. They can't be put in start one or step two, step three, they have to start at the top. So, it really does make sense that we, basically, you treat them the same as you do the administrator. For the administrator, there are no steps. This is a salary. You have made a decision every year to give the administrator the same amount as you did everybody else. Legally, you don't have to do that. Just what the elected officials, you could pass a motion giving everyone the 3.25% and not give it to the elected officials, which is perfectly legal. You just can't lower it.
The courts have said that the salary goes with the position, not the person in the position. So, the tie into years of service is a problem. You always have a flexibility going up, you can't go down. You can't go down, it's not tied to the person in the position.
Okay.
The classic case, way back in World War II, there was, I think it was a treasurer, actually, who got elected and found to sign up for military overseas in a few years. He, I guess he wrote a few letters and contacted them, and then came back and said, and our commissioners didn't pay him, he wasn't there. He came back and said, where's my salary? And the court said, yeah, it goes to the position, he was still a treasurer, he gets the money. And so, it's really tied to the position, not the person in the position, except you can reset that position each, beginning of each term. And then actually, that was a sequence of the two deputies, the general sheriffs.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll talk about those later, because I want to keep those separate.
Well, I think, I think we, are we okay to move on about, because I think we have to, we'll have to figure this out. We know what the first issue is. Okay.
So, in simple terms, because I know we have a time crunch, our recommendation is that you put all the elected officials on one salary step. And you need to make a decision on board about the register of deeds. There's a, I think, an ethics fairness situation. Until the sheriff has always been the same, the same steps, but because her being new in office.
Because what, David, if I understand what you're saying, David, is that Jen should have started at 75, 701, same as where the last register left?
No, because we passed the budget with this, and she's new.
And she's new, okay.
If she would have taken this?
Even though we used the step system to set that, it's okay?
Well, we should get rid of it, but?
I get it.
But if Dorothy would have resigned on January 15th, 2021, for example?
Okay.
And Jen?
December 15th?
Well, I'll just pick a date, yeah. If she would have resigned during her term of office?
Then it would be?
Whoever was appointed had to be the same pay, and you could not have reduced it. So, very simple terms.
Chuck, can I say something, too?
Yes, go ahead.
You also want to look at the fact that the scale, when I was elected in 20, this scale was in place, and I had a potential to make that amount by the end of my term. So, can that even be reduced? Because can that be, can that scale be changed? Can that amount be lowered? Since when I was elected, that potential to make that was at the top scale. I would be at the top scale. Can it be reduced within my term?
Did you hear that, David?
Does that make sense?
I did not.
Okay, let me try and help.
Cannot.
So, let's just use, I don't want to pick on people, but you're the great example. So, when Jen ran in 2020, she knew what the starting pay was, she knew what the four-year rate was. She came in at year two, I believe, but knowing that after?
No, we started her at one.
Year one, okay, year two now, okay. She knew what her four-year potential was. Right now, she's not at the top of that four-year scale. If the board legally, as I understand, the board has the right to keep her where she is now. However, her potential is less than she thought it was going to be when she ran for the office, if we were to eliminate the steps.
Why is that? Because your potential is 75?
Yeah, but I'm saying she right now is making, legally, you could keep her at 70.
She's below the potential.
Yeah, that's the question.
I'm not sure that's true, because they actually did adopt that scale. I don't think you can reduce it going forward, underneath the steps now, and so walk into those.
So, for her?
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying if we get rid of steps?
Yeah.
We can't?
You still have to give her the steps.
You still have to give her the steps.
You still have to give her the steps, yes.
Each budget, each budget year, it would be adjusted to that step.
So, she could, you could adjust her right now. Yeah, so you have two options. One is put all of the elected officials at their current salary, eliminate all steps, keep the register of deeds with the steps until she hits the top, or you can adjust her at now to get her to the top and eliminate all steps.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but is David saying we can keep steps for the register of deeds? Since we had them in place when she?
Until she hits the top.
You're supposed to do it annually, but essentially, I think you're, because you adopted the scale stretching out into the future, at least until 2025, I don't think you can go lower than that. Still, you can do it easier.
Yeah, we don't want to go lower. This is why I don't understand why we would go lower.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's saying we should go lower.
Right.
It's whether how long it takes her to get to the top.
Okay. I guess that's my question.
In simple terms, you could eliminate the steps immediately, if you made, if you put her on the top. Or you can keep, you could eliminate steps for all the elected officials, with the exception of register of deeds, and in two years, she'd be at the top.
All right, so I'm sure we're okay, we know we're okay with whatever we choose to do then on Jen.
So, everyone understand?
Yep, on that position.
The treasurer, clerk, and sheriff, they've all been the same pay?
No, 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 they stay where they are.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Treasurer and clerk are the same right now, and the top step for the register of deeds is the same as those two.
The only potential change in anyone's salary, if we eliminate steps, would be the register of deeds.
All right.
So, we're set on that?
Yes.
Okay. And let's go now to the undersheriff. So, as you know, Steve Morgan did a great job here as undersheriff. He resigned February of last year, correct? Yes, yes. At that point, Jim Kiesel was named the undersheriff. Because we had steps, the decision was made to put Mr. Kiesel not at the same salary as Mr. Morgan was made. So, Mr. Morgan, when he retired, was at the top of the scale.
Okay.
When Jim came in, he was put on step?
Two, well, step, not step one, I guess.
Yeah, step one, step one.
Okay.
So, when this issue surfaced, question was asked, okay, was that legal? And I believe, David, you're saying it was not, that because Mr. Morgan retired in the middle of a term?
Gotcha.
Mr. Kiesel, whoever was appointed to that, should have been at the same amount as, as Mr. Morgan. Correct, David?
As you mentioned.
Okay.
Okay.
So, does that, does that mean then we have not only the justice, but back pay issues?
I will say that, I don't speak on Mr. Kiesel, and I did briefly talk, there's no court case. I think Mr. Kiesel would be agreeable to just making the adjustment going forward.
I thought you were going to say delighted for retro.
I won't say delighted.
Not delighted?
I guess that decision there was a board need to make.
We need to make that decision, too.
I don't speak on your behalf, he was able.
I think since it's our mistake, we?
I mean, that's a decision.
Go ahead.
I would like to comment, since Commissioner Rushon just said it was our mistake. I want to be very clear about this. It was noted to the proper people that he was to go to the top of the scale. There was no mistake, it was a, it was a no decision. I made it very clear, he was to go to the top of the scale. And those that were in charge, we had to agree.
I think it was the lack of knowledge. We did not know that at that point. And I understand where the sheriff, I know the sheriff we're coming from.
But, all right, understood. Thank you. Thank you for that, because.
I'll put it in writing?
Yeah, the mound sheriff.
I spoke to the administrator and to the sheriff.
The offer letter comes from the elected official, the offer letter to Mr. Kiesel came from the sheriff and the sheriff of that big scale. And I understand where?
But anyway, but anyway.
It was Steve Morgan's decision, I mean, I, I understand, Steve was here for many years, was it, we had, we did not know the scale had legal issues. Decision was made to put him, Jim agreed on it, and we moved forward, until we found out just recently that it was not proper.
So, so, but, but we got to look at this as, as Leland County and a position.
Yes.
So, so we have two things to look at here. One is, sounds like, pretty easy, we have to move the undersheriff position up to the top.
And what I told him, that assume you agree, we put this on the main agenda to make that correction.
And the other question would be?
Electable officials.
Is, is whether we do retro, and maybe we should talk to David later about that. Okay.
All right, so?
All right.
Jim, do you want to add anything? I don't want to speak on your behalf here.
No, Jim, I want, I would like to rectify it, obviously, to fix that error. As far as the retro, obviously, I'm not going to say I wouldn't like to see that fixed, you know, whether it was known or unknown, obviously, we wanted to make that pretty clear. You know, if I was entitled that 14 months ago, I feel that probably should be rectified, too. I'm not saying I'm going to take action, but obviously, if it should have been done then, and it was not done properly at that point, at this point, maybe it should be.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
I think it was a lack of understanding in the law when it comes on what the second-in-command of elected officials. Until?
Well, we had the step, we've had this step for years, and we have never heard that we shouldn't be using it for elected officials.
Well, until the issue with the chief clerk?
Exactly.
Position came up, that's the first time I heard that. I knew about elected officials, I did not know about chief deputies or second-in-commands, nor did anyone ever bring up the issues of the steps.
Right. Good to know.
I give, in the sheriff's office specifically, we've had, we've had changeover, we've had everyone undersheriffs, but it's always happened at a turn.
Yeah.
So, there were, the issues would be similar to Jen's, not this specific issue, where the undersheriff left mid-term. So, this one is kind of unique, because it's kind of surprising to change undersheriff mid-term.
Yep, yep, good point. Okay.
A question, though, I understand for elected officials, but are appointing, appointments of elected officials subject to the same rules as elected officials?
They're deputies.
Yes, as well as, as well as appointments to the chief deputies, which are considered. county offices.
Not just deputies, but.
Appointments and elected are treated the same. A number of court cases in the general opinion on that.
So just as an FYI, this hasn't happened, at least since I'm here, if an elected official resigns or whatever leaves office middle of term, there's a commission appointment that's composed of, help out Michelle.
For the county clerk and prosecutor, if they leave a retirement term, that points by the circuit court judges. For the office of county treasurer, county register of deeds, and sheriff is handled by the probate judge prosecuting attorney and the county clerk.
Who are their name of that term?
Their name of that term.
So are we clear on that, Michelle?
Yep, yep. Think so.
Okay. Now let's go to the chief deputy register of deeds and the chief deputy for the treasurer office. Those are hourly position currently, as you know. We talked last time about switching them to salary. We did get a legal opinion here that basically the same law apply to those chief deputy positions as to the elected officials and the undersheriff too. We just have different titles, but they're second-in command. I, I think these are professional opinions or professional positions. And we met internally, and I think it's the recognition of the treasurer and the register of deeds that the chief deputies be switched to salary, also eliminating the steps because the same issue comes forward with the chief deputies as it does for the, as it does for the elected officials in terms of steps. So let me just round off these numbers. Currently, the chief deputies for the treasurer and register of deeds make approximately just under forty-nine thousand dollars per year. They're hourly. But those two offices have historically not had overtime or hours beyond thirty-five. So just under forty-nine thousand is the average. The average worker in those offices makes approximately forty-two thousand per year. And the elected official makes approximately seventy-five thousand if they're at the top of the pay scale. So look at what would be fair based on the fact that, that if they were go to salary positions, they do take a risk taking on those jobs. Those are at-will. If there's a change in the elected official, the chief deputy, there's no job guarantee. They could be let go at any time with no reason. And so they do take a risk. They are, they have, do have more authority. For example, if the clerk is gone, or the register of deeds is gone, or the treasurer's gone, the number two person does have legal authority on certain issues to go forward. This got surfaced originally in the register of deeds. When Jen took over, her new chief register of deeds was making twelve cents an hour more than the other people in the office.
That's currently.
Currently.
She would have had to take a pay cut.
Yes.
In order to take the position.
Yeah. So currently, there's only twelve cents difference here. But that person basically gave up their job security and taken on extra duties. So we thought what would be a fair solution? And then we found out the issue of the steps. So what we were thinking would be fair is not have steps anymore, what we talked about last time, but simply set a straight salary of fifty-six nine four one. And we based that on step, the beginning scale on the chief emergency management director, if you look at that pay scale. Originally, we had, we had steps there. So what we're doing is a straight recommendation of fifty-six thousand nine hundred forty-one and get rid of steps. And that means they would not be eligible for extra compensation if they were working hours beyond thirty-five hours a week. And David, it is legally to convert them from hourly to salary based on the compensation is not reduced, correct?
Yeah, and, and it gets tricky because obviously hourly and you get ten and a half over, over forty, which is what we've been doing. It's possible if you worked it out overtime, you could be making more and then the next year would be less overtime, or you could just pass hours, you make less, you would have reduced their salary.
Yeah. Which, which we'll talk about clerk, and that's why we're keeping the chief deputy clerk out of this discussion.
Right.
Because historically, the register of deeds, chief deputy, and the treasurer chief deputy have not worked overtime. So their sal, their, their pay on annual basis has been pretty consistent.
But in theory, it's possible there too. That's why we suggest a single salary.
Yeah.
Not having hourly.
So once again, we eliminate the steps, go to salary versus hourly.
So.
As David suggested, and make it the fifty-six nine four one.
So the fifty-six, we don't have that issue with overtime from last year. This is more than what the, the.
And those people have not worked overtime. And it's more than those. Yeah, we're not going to the clerk's office yet.
No, I understand, but I didn't know if we had any overtime issues in either of these two offices. Okay. Okay?
Does that make, does that understand?
So we'll look at that.
Yeah, I'm not asking too. The doors are this one, I just want.
Now, did you just arbitrarily, it's not arbitration, I shouldn't say that, but you just picked that number based on where a couple other starting salaries are.
Well, we looked at the chief deputy for the emergency management, and if you look at the pay scale that's in this packet of previous chart there. If you look at the assistant direct for nine one one.
Assistant nine one one, yeah.
So that person starts at the fifty-six nine four one.
Okay.
And then goes to the sixty, sixty-three zero nine seven. Once again, we don't want to compare people and individuals and jobs, but.
No.
We felt, at least the three of us.
Let's say the three of them, there was some overtime there. We can explore that in the budget and make adjustments there, can't we?
Well, if we change up the salary, there'll be no need.
Right.
Salary is salary.
But if there were, say, there was.
But in the register of deeds.
Yeah, we'd have to look at.
In the past years, in the register of deeds office and the treasurer, there was no overtime. So there is no issue there.
Okay, yes, Josh?
Common one fifty-six, I don't want to be seen arbitrary. I've had my vacancy closer for approximately two weeks with the range of forty-nine thousand as a starting period. And I received one out.
Okay.
So that's because.
I think that'd mean that if it were start, if it were a set salary of fifty-six, you would get more applicants.
I'm hoping.
But I think there's a respect issue in terms of those jobs too. I think they're professional jobs. They're not hourly jobs. I mean, I, I value what hourly workers make, but these people do have extra duties, responsibilities, and a no job security. At any point, any of these elected officials could decide they want to change in that personnel. Don't let these people.
Pushing the rewind button, we were talking earlier on the, on the undersheriff and the chief deputies. I know, I don't know what your situation is, but it used to be when you went to undersheriff, you could negotiate bump back. Do you have bump back?
Yes.
Okay. Now can you do the same for the chief deputy clerks if they take that position?
It's not in the contract. There's no bump back.
Okay, so it's not like the undersheriff.
No.
Never heard bump back, so I didn't think so.
Is listed in the command contract. They allow position, when I left there, I could take their position outside, should have something altered, other than this one, I didn't bump back.
And I believe there's a title.
Okay, they go back to that.
They never did put the title.
Oh, they did? Okay. No, that's not part of the teachers contract. The other obvious people are covered by the teachers contract. So when decision was made for Danville, Jen's chief deputy, when she left her former job to become chief register of deeds, she gave up the right to come back.
Okay.
Chuck, in the, in the teachers contract in this building, there is no bump back, bump back out.
Oh, yeah, I've heard about, it used to be the undersheriff had to make a deal with the union.
Yeah, that's not.
The union had to agree.
But even if, even if a teacher's employee comes out and goes from one office to another office and if there's layup, there is no bumping back into the other offices. The elected officials wouldn't sign off on employees bumping back and taking off on their own points.
Right, okay.
So in simple term, the average worker in the register of deeds and the treasurer office makes approximately forty-two thousand. We are recommending the fifty-six thousand for the chief deputies. The elected officials make seventy-five thousand. So we thought that's enough of a range. We said we ought, I think, agree that the twelve cent difference is not fair. And I think they are professional positions. And actually, when Dave and I first started talking about, he was on the assumption that these were salary positions. So we had to have a second call because the assumption was made is, at least based on my information, most of the counties have these people a salary one-step position. And David, it's, I just want to confirm one more time. If we were to switch these two positions from hourly to the proposed salary, there are no legal issues? And you would recommend that we just have one step for these positions?
Now, I think you've got, where you're putting it is enough gap. Again, technically, you've got to look at what happens in this term, which really goes from last year.
Yeah.
First year of term.
Yeah.
So what we know was the overtime was last year. There's really not an issue reducing it.
Yeah.
In real dollar values, but then the question is, are you reducing it potential wise? They had a ton of overtime issue, which they not conditionally had, would, would they be getting less? Historically, these positions have not had much overtime. We've got enough of a gap there that I don't see that as a potential issue.
Okay.
I think, I think where you're, Chuck is suggesting is, is legally safe.
Any questions?
Okay.
Three commissioners on that?
Yeah, I accept that one.
Okay. All right. Like I said, these are kind of complicated issues. That's what we're trying to, and I thought it really helped to have David here answer it. So, okay, this is probably the most complicated is the chief deputy clerk, and this is what kind of spurred this dialogue and the legal opinion. And once again, let's just take names out, names out of this. So in twenty twenty-one, which is the first year of the four-year term, for many reasons, there was substantial overtime in that position, and that chief deputy clerk, I believe, grossed approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars last year. Is that fair, Michelle, approximately? All right, so the question is, when she left that position and a new person came in, what's the pay scale? And where are they placed and what can we legally do? Because she is the chief deputy, and David, help me address this. You're saying, oh, even the pay scale was the same for the chief clerk as it was for the chief deputy treasurer and the chief deputy register of deeds? Because that chief deputy clerk worked substantial overtime in twenty twenty-one, whoever is in that position cannot be reduced going forward?
Essentially, you know, roughly up what happened in the W two last year, which was the first year of the term, and you can't reduce the salary during the current, regardless of who knows, whether it's someone experienced or someone on the street. So essentially, you lock yourself in that, which is one of the problems of trying, of having an hourly basis and paying overtime. By its nature, that fluctuates and, and you can fluctuate up legally, which can't fluctuate back down once you do. And that, that's raised the problem. You, in this case, though, you only have to really look back one year, because that was the first year of the term. You can't reduce it during the term. So you can't take it more than it was last year, but you can take it higher. Again, essentially, the self, the self call for salary doesn't define salary, but it implies it's going to be a salary, not hourly as well. So I, I think, I, I think that doing a single step that you then look at each year is probably a prudent thing to do.
So really, because it was the first year of the term, twenty twenty-one, and because the person in that job worked substantial overtime and made sixty-eight thousand, that's the standard for the next four years going forward, for the next three years going forward through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Correct?
Yes, and that's regardless of whoever holds that position.
I have a.
Internal, external, whatever.
A question on that, last year, the deputy clerk also was responsible for accounting. That was responsible, that's one of the reasons she got overtime. If that accounting function leaves that position, we're still legally obligated to pay as much as we paid in overtime last year, even if she didn't need overtime.
The answer would be yes. Now, there is flexibility in advance, you, if it's work that's outside of the normal function, I'm not sure this was outside the normal, by the statutes, but it was outside of the normal function and you had an agreement in advance, you could then drop that pay on that actual work. Work outside of the normal job, product pay. We didn't do that here, basically. I, I think we did do that actually with the clerk position, but we didn't with the chief deputy. And so essentially, they gave part of their cap. So could you do that? Normally, I would recommend, but potentially legally, maybe you could, but didn't.
So David, as you well know, the board created two new positions. One is the human resource director, one is the finance director. And the board made the adjustment to transfer the accounting from the clerk's office to the administrative office as of this year. But because it was in last year in the clerk's office and the chief deputy worked that, plus other duties, election courts and so forth, that person made approximately sixty-eight thousand. Even with the removal of the accounting functions from the clerk's office, the chief deputy salary through December twenty twenty-four has to stay at that sixty-eight thousand range?
I think you locked yourself in by.
Okay.
And I didn't understand that it wasn't just the accounting.
No, no. No, we had some people on, we had some people that had medical leaves. Yeah. So let me ask this question.
Where do they ideally make their salary and would they pay extra?
Okay, can the board make adjustments in some of the chief deputies and not the other ones? For example, could the board keep, switch the register of deeds deputy and treasurer's deputy to salary and keep the chief deputy clerk exactly where it is hourly? Based on this information?
You could, I think, if you clean a method, and that obviously being having unknown, you're actually going to delay the best way you've done it. If.
But.
If you in fact did that, left, left this one hourly and then they worked less hours and had less overtime this year, did you reduce their salary?
Yeah.
Or did you pay less? If they worked, and you look around and you set it as salary that's fixed and they would have made more hourly, did you pay them less as well? So you kind of created a catch twenty-two. I think the safer method is to use what the statutes envision, which is setting a fixed salary or more position that's not less than last year.
Okay, let me ask one final question because this has been brought up too. Obviously, the board sets the personnel levels at each office, sets, sets the budget, sets the overtime. Does the board have the right to reduce the amount of overtime hours budgeted in these offices? For example, use this example, and this question has been brought up, and I know we, we talked about it. Does the board have the right to reduce the amount of overtime budgeted to the clerk's office? And how would that impact this person?
It's clearly a question, and that's a question that comes to mandate of function what you do. And, and I think you, you do need to keep in mind that this is an election year. I, I would have expected that this year would be not, I would, I would rather it last year actually, because of the question. So can you say you can't work the election? Probably not. It creates influence. By going salary though, you end up having fixed hour amount, which I think is probably a little safe.
So the question was asked, and I want to bring it up here for everyone, does the board have the right to reduce the overtime and then force the clerk to appoint other people in her office to work the extra hours at a lower salary or lower pay rate?
As long as the elected offices can minimally not opt into performing their required functions, you, the board has, you can reset the questions. So again, budgetary.
But that's all, but that's really all we do, right? I mean, it's up to, say, the sheriff to schedule his overtime and the clerk. I mean, it's up to, say, the sheriff to schedule his overtime, and the clerk to schedule her overtime, and-
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, at least-
No, the question was asked, that's why I brought it up.
Oh, okay. All right. So-
Cherry, who asked that question about wanting to reduce the overtime and scheduling up different people in the clerk's office? I didn't hear.
I asked that question, that is brought, that was brought to me as to ask Mr.-
Did you know we brought it forward?
Oh, I'm not going to say it, just going to bring it forward.
Okay. So that would be-
But I think all of us needs to have that answer. So really, it's the elected official's decision how that budget's set and who gets those hours. And the elected official can make a case that, well, because of the election or someone on a family medical leave or for whatever reason, that person has the right to assign people to them.
Or it may be skills.
Or it could be skills, yes.
Yep. Okay. All right, so I, I think we're pretty, I think we have a safer-
The board really does not have much authority on that.
You, you use the word safer, I think, kind of like that as we move forward. Okay.
Which is another reason why these positions should be salaried.
Uh, i- 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 yeah, we, thank you, David, for that. I'm understanding that better. So any more questions on this one?
So based on that, and help me out here, Michelle, if you look historically, the chief deputy clerk has worked approximately 40 hours, at least 40 hours per week-
Correct.
-for the last number of years. It's very, based on election, based on who's on medical leave, office turnover, but historically, as I understand, the chief deputy clerk has worked 40 hours per week, correct?
Correct. Everyone in my office is working extra.
Yeah, but-
No, 40 hours per week, and actually, 2021 was 142 hours less than 2019, because remember in 2019, we had ransomware and was running court work remotely off of iPhones because none of our computers were working and we were doing double the work, keeping up with the court. So, but yes, to your question, it's, it's averages.
So if you look at that, the fact that historically, and once again, this is not a one individual, the clerk, the chief deputy clerk, for many years, has worked more than the 35 hours. The other chief deputies, they're all were based on 35 hours work week. You look historically, the other offices have stayed with it, with the exception of the clerk, which has averaged at least 40 hours per week. If you look at the legal opinion we have, based on what the chief deputy clerk was making last year, which is, I'll just say $68,000, it appears that if we wish to switch to salary, we don't have much choice but to set it at $68,000. If you, you don't have to do it, however you keep it hourly, it appears that that person has to make at least $68,000 because that was the standard set in 2021, which is the first year of the four-year election cycle. Is that a fair statement, David?
Yes.
Yeah. And I just want to say, no one is saying reducing the overtime from the clerk's office. That was a question brought up, I wanted all of you to have the answer.
No, hopefully, hopefully we're, it'll be reduced anyway. This is really, it's really a good deal to go to salary on this position, and as, same as the others, any of the deputy positions, I think it's a really good idea. We've been pushing for that. But we added another position too, and that's going to help with overtime, we hope, this year, if you're successful fulfilling that position.
Well, I'll give you an example. I've got a new person in there, will be fully back up to staffed. We should be clerking about 32 meetings per year just for the Board of Commissioners. As of the end of April, we will be at 30. End of April, 30 meetings. We haven't even gotten to budget.
So four times what you're expected to be clerking.
Mm-hmm. And we have huge, huge, huge traffic flow. Not a complaint, it's just, it's just the way it is. I've got everyone working extra hours. I have, over the past years, had employees that would refuse to work extra. They made it very clear, they're nine to five, there are no nights, there are no weekends, and that's fine.
Sure. What can we do to help you?
We're just going to keep plowing forward.
Since I've been here, it just keeps, and we're not doing something right as a board, if we're not staffing, you know, we can't get this-
You have, you've given me the, the new position, and I think that will help. And we'll just, we'll just see where we are. I think there needs to be adjustments, but the clerk's office is, is different than others.
Well, I know that.
Yeah.
Sheriff's Department's here too.
They have a lot of overtime too.
Yeah, but they have more people.
True.
All right.
True.
Yeah, and the undersheriff has always been salary, well, as long as I can remember, it's always been salary, so that-
I mean, I'm going to be open, Michelle, I mean, I'm not going to tell you how you do your job, you do a great job. It's a little confusing from going from the government world, private world, business, and where I come from, I look at a chief deputy clerk or undersheriff, their supervision, it's the workers who are supposed to get the overtime and be doing the work.
I have, I have workers getting overtime and lots of overtime.
But it just seems like, I've never been in a situation where I've seen a supervisor make so much overtime, so much more than the workers. It's always been work.
It's because when your salary people work, they don't get compensated for their extra hours.
But you're young and salary.
That's correct. I don't get any extra compensation for working $65 hours a week.
I think, Rick, you're talking about the other people in the clerk's office, right?
Correct, the other people, yes.
They are all, they're all earning extra.
Okay.
They're all, I'm happy to show you-
Well, you did approve a new position, and you are, this week, you're fully staffed, you have someone going on that fellow name this week, but as of this week, you are the new person, you have filled a new position.
I, I think it's just, it's just lack of understanding of the duties. We're working-
But the good is, you are, at least you have your staff now.
Your, your elected officials, most of them are working elected officials here. Your chiefs, your undersheriffs, they're working. They're not just sitting back and pushing the paper and saying, you do this, you do that. They're, they're involved in, in every aspect of it.
No, I understand, and I, I don't, I don't want to get you out, I don't want to tell you how to run your own system.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it just, like I said, to see, it'd be like going to the sheriff's department and seeing Jim get all the overtime over there and deputies aren't getting anything. That's how I look at it from-
Oh, well, you, you would probably then want to get a review of who actually is earning overtime through a whole complex.
Well, I did ask for that, I was getting it every month, but then it just, it was broke down where I couldn't really understand it, and I was told that was intentional.
Oh, I don't know by who would say it would be intentional.
We'll be glad to sit down with you, I think-
Yeah, I think you could sit down, you could sit down and you could get it per employee.
And you're right, it's just, you know-
Those kind of, those kind of comments aren't helpful.
If you all sat down and communicated, we'd probably all understand.
Yeah.
Just like I explained last night with Mr. Price, you know? We were two different parties, but when we talked, we became-
Yeah, that's good.
And it's, it doesn't happen here.
That's very good. I'd be happy to sit down anytime and discuss-
Good information to have. Overtime. Always receive those types of reports and decipher them. So do we need Mr. Stoker for this next?
Well, no, I was going to say, well, the, only other one is with the administrative assistant, that is not tied into these election laws, you have the right to adjust that anyway. There's no issues there, that's a different thing. But I just thought it would very help to have David here for these, because these are very complex-
Okay.
-issues.
Do you have an opinion on this last position, Mr. Stoker?
It's my assistant, David.
For the executive assistant? We have, is she at 26.4 now?
So-
Or where is she at?
That position has been at the same level as the chief deputy for the register of deeds and the chief deputy for the treasurer. If you look at the pay scale, it's exactly the same. And if we're going to make changes, I would say to keep that fair, that is a very important position, especially with a new administrator coming onboard, and once again, if we're going to get rid of overtime or anything, make that salary. She has worked beyond 35 hours a week on a record basis, not many times over 40 for overtime, but between 35 and 40, especially while Zoom meetings and everything going on, and the evening meetings and so forth. She traditionally is over the 35 hours a week. But if you look at that position, the administrative assistant for the administrator, the chief deputy register of deeds and chief deputy treasurer have been paid the same. And I think some-
Wait, back, back up, because you're going a little bit fast on those. So the, the, we got to go back to our old chart.
Yeah, if you look at the current pay scale.
Yep, just a second, let me find the executive, where does she, okay, up there. She was at 26.74.
Which is the same as the-
Same as the chief deputy treasurer, chief deputy clerk, and, okay, the executive assistant and senior services coordinator, okay.
You see, I see, so that's always been the same.
Okay.
So I think there's logic to make that a salary. She has worked more than 35 hours a week on a record basis, especially the last couple years with all the-
But the law doesn't come into play, correct?
No, 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 that's a separate, no, there's no-
So we can, we, if we want to, we can either leave that salary or leave that hourly.
That's up to you as board.
So is she getting overtime now?
She makes some of the, yes, some.
Some additional overtime?
Is she at the top of the scale?
Yes.
If she's at the top of the scale, working 40 hours a week, that's 53.4 per year.
Oh, yeah, and she actually made about that much less. I don't, I honestly don't know how much she made, but it was not the 49th of the extra hours. I think she made about 55 last year, and we can confirm that, do you know?
That's nice, so 35 hours.
But she did have extra hours and some overtime.
I did not bring that.
I believe it was, I'm close here, about $55,000 last year.
My, my only concern on these is, and I support what we're doing, but then I look at the court employees and some of the other staff, and I don't know where it ends.
That's, that's always a problem when you start looking at-
I go back to a year ago, Ty, shed right here when the prosecutor came out, and you imagine that, we were open a can of worms.
Oh, do we need David Stoker anymore?
I was just going to say the very same thing, because really, we've gone away from what David is saying we, we need to perhaps repair or change. So is there anything else, Mr. Stoker, that we, we, we've forgotten? Is there anything else we should be asking you?
No, I think you've covered it. I've obviously, the other positions are, they don't have a statute or your constitutional restrictions, so it's in your discretion.
Let me-
Most boards look at what's comparable and make it so you, you keep the employee and, and so, well, one of your other departments doesn't hire away one of these lacking positions, keep this board able to work as well as else, but essentially, the, it's in your discretion.
Okay.
Most counties look at, you know, sort of the work levels and what's comparable.
Before I let you go-
Restrictions we did on, that we talked about earlier on last week are, are the latter.
Before I let you go, are there any questions on the treasurer, the undersheriff, register of deeds, clerk, I think she's, she loved. Any, anything? Okay. Well, thank you very much, David, we appreciate this.
Yes, thank you.
You've been very helpful.
Anything else, give us a call.
You're on my speed dial.
Oh, thank you.
We all need you on speed dial.
Thank you very much, David.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that brings us back to what Rick was just saying, and, and I, and that also was my concern when we did that, when we did what we did last year, because, well, number one, I thought we had perhaps a different alternate course to take than the one we did, but if, if we were to look at this one, because it's outside of what I'm going to say is the realm of these four, if our attorney suggested perhaps we better clean up these four, this fifth one is outside of those realms. So it's a question of, do we want to leave it where it is and leave it hourly, hourly right now?
Yes.
At 26.74, or do we want to make it salary? And we don't, we don't have to make it salary at least. So we do have a choice with this one. And I guess it's in the, the range. If we do, are we going to start toppling like, like you said? Are we going to start, if we start, look, if we go after this one, are we going to start having others? And what other ones, you know, are going to follow?
Ty is absolutely right, there is, no, he's ready to do this, once you start it, it opens up. I can make a very solid case that our sheriff is underpaid. And that's not coming from the sheriff, it's nothing to do with it, but if you look at the overtime, we have deputies that are making more money than the sheriff and not the sheriff.
Yep.
You know, is that, that's a bit right? For the amount of hours they put in, the phone calls they get, they're on call basically 24/7, and yet we have deputies, there's no fault in it, just the way it is, and maybe it, maybe that's the same case with you in Van Jers County or wherever, but we have deputies making more money than our elected officials, and then when you look at the pay range, the difference between the sheriff and undersheriff?
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty minor, so you don't do it for the money, obviously, but if you look from a strict financial standpoint, how many extra duties the sheriff has to the undersheriff, and if you look at the pay scale, there's hardly any difference between the two. I mean, you could go on, senior services, Trudy Gallo can make a case for planning, I mean, it's-
This is where I'm thinking that.
And, Chair.
Go ahead.
My preference would be, we did these because we had to. We do the rest of them as a group at some point. That would be, I think that's-
And maybe you bring it on outside consultant, because sometimes that helps, you know? But I didn't want to separate all these because there's legal issues involved in some of these.
I think that would be a really good idea to take these to the board, and then, and then we would have this clearer picture moving forward. It's not complicated, just do these one at a time.
My question about overtime was simply to get it on the table so everyone who were coming from, no one, no one came to me and suggestively cut the budget for the clerk's office.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that.
Good.
Well, the question was brought up, and I think all of us needed to have the answer, in case there are things out there floating. It's one for the honor record, that it was, no one came to me requesting or suggesting we cut the overtime in the clerk's office. It was a question where the board has that authority. Because take all the politics out of it, let's say we have a treasurer that's upset with the board for whatever reasons, and that treasurer wants to give more overtime to the chief deputy if they're hourly, once that standard is set the first year, there's no turning back.
Yep.
So really, the board does lose control by having these hourly. That alone is a great reason to put them on salary.
It is.
To avoid those type of, and I don't, that would not happen, but it could happen.
Overtime serves a purpose, we budget overtime for a reason, it serves a purpose when it comes down to it, and it, and it has, so.
But I say for professional reasons, these should be salary positions. They are professional positions.
All right, so that brings us to the end of here. Do we want to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners today, or?
Do we have the other month that we're gonna do?
I, we have, if we take these one at a time, first question is the register of deeds. Register of deeds started at that first year, we can keep her there or we can move her up if we choose to. So register of deeds is at, this, right now, she moved up one year, so she is at the 70, 797, which is the one year.
Yeah, come in the one year.
One year right now.
Correct.
And legally, we can leave her there, top of her scale is 75. If we move her up to 75, it would immediately put her last step with the other two that are comparable, which is the, the-
The clerk and the treasurer.
Well, it's not the clerk. Yeah, the clerk.
Yeah.
Clerk, that's it, clerk and the treasurer. Yes, thank you. Clerk and the treasurer, where those three have always been. So we, we can take action or not take action, whatever you, whatever you choose to do. In three years, she will top out.
Is that your current, are you currently at 77.97?
I am currently at 77.97, yeah, but every year, then if you, we'll have to continue keeping up the stuff.
Right.
Yes.
That is what was approved at the beginning of the term.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we're all here.
That's right. So when we budget this summer, you'll be moving up to 72.410.
If you don't take any action-
If you don't take any action, that's going to happen automatically, is my understanding. Okay. That would be the first one. Second one then is a more complex.
I'm sorry, was there a recommendation on the?
Not yet.
Not yet. I didn't know that was something.
No. Second thing we have to look at then is the, the undersheriff, and he needs to be at the top.
The only question is, are you going to make a retroactive?
Is, yeah, so, so that the undersheriff is bottom.
I think we have to, because we have to send a message to the other employees that are here in the bathroom, and stuff like this happens. I would support it, but I guess I, I'm suggesting that we at least throw a motion into the- I would support it, but I guess I, I'm suggesting that we at least throw a motion into the rest of the board and let the board decide.
Let the board decide. So your motion is to move the undersheriff up to the top of the scale, which is eighty-two, three, eighty-eight, fifty-four. And you mentioned retro. Your motion.
A second motion of retro.
Second motion. Okay, so for the first motion, I support the first motion. Any other discussion?
Just, just as a thought, and I don't know, but we could, we could, we can just do it this year, we could make it retroactive, or we could phase it in. Uh, and, and, and I, I'm not sure which we.
How could you phase it in?
Well, do, we meet halfway in the middle.
I think we have.
Okay, legally, he has to get it top.
We have to move it.
No, but I mean for the last year.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's.
Retro.
And that's the decision, and, no, Mr. Keeson always legal rights our soul, like.
That's right.
I don't speak against the half.
He's got his hand up, yeah.
Go ahead, yes, Jim.
I guess if in the middle would mean, you put me at the top, you pay me retro, I would not expect that retro to raise that salary next year contrary to the law. If that's middle, because obviously, that's the part of the.
That's a very good point.
That's, that's a very good question, because what we'd have to do is have a legal opinion to have that in writing. And I think too, Jim, if, if you go retro, you would go to the day, the last day that undersheriff or gives you.
Whatever this would be. Because we. I would not look to add that to next year to put you in the same bracket.
But legally, we may.
That would be, that would have to be a stipend.
Let's leave the retro out today and get a legal opinion.
Yeah, we would have to. This is one time stipend.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, I do have a question on that. So.
Yes.
I'm thinking of this on the Human Resources Act that I've worn for a long time. And what happens is, is if you do do a retro pay, I would suggest that, if that is a recommendation, because his MERS will need to be corrected for last year, which will also affect his benefit, his high FAC.
Yep.
So if he wins the Lotto next year, then, and leaves, that year is reported correctly at the wage that the board would have done at the time.
I'm not looking to make the same problem next year.
No, but then.
Right.
It's, so what happens is when you do a one-time, this is what it should have been, we go back and we correct his wages in MERS for last year of what it should have been.
Okay.
And the county pays in, um, on those wages, and then it's recorded for the year that that was his earnings. His W-2 would show it for this year, but on his benefit package, it goes back.
So at the very least, though. Right, that, right, thank you for that. So, so we have to move it up to the top, which is at eighty-two, but we're in April, so.
Let me get a legal opinion from Mr. Stoker. If we were to make it retroactive, how we could do that, and not impact future, because you're right.
Right.
I mean, I'm fine with it.
It's a matter of if we're retro. So we, even today, should we go back to January one for, go back to January one, twenty-twenty-two, and move Jim up to the, the top of the scale?
We'll put it on the page here.
So that's the motion. Okay. And then we'll get a legal opinion on last year and how to proceed with last.
On the retro.
Year, and bring that question to the board. Okay, all right, so all those in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed? Okay, so three-zero on, um, Mr. Keeson. The chief deputy register of deeds, we have the, um, suggestion of moving her, the position, I should say, up to the fifty-six, fifty-six nine forty-one. That's a recommendation of the administrator to, to make it.
The chief deputy register of deeds and the treasurer.
And the chief deputy treasurer, both positions.
The same.
I guess they are both the same, yeah. I mean, they're technically both the same.
And you heard from Mr. Stoker, there are no legal issues with that. So basically, the salary could be a one-step salary, well, there would be no step, just, this is salary. And it'd be fifty-six nine four one. And that would not be retroactive, that would just, from whatever you pass the motion.
And that's, that's just, that's just the attorney's, I was just, the attorney's, that's just our administrator's recommendation. He picks that number, as he said, based on some of these other charts.
What consultation?
We do have.
With these two?
Right.
That's why I'm sure.
As your recommendations, sure. Okay, but if we want to look at this, we really could pick anywhere from forty, forty-nine up, right, their check, whatever that.
Yes.
Highest wage was last year, which was around forty-nine. So it doesn't have to be fifty-six. You can pick fifty, fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, right.
It is your choice as a board.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
Not what we're saying.
The administrator's recommending fifty-six, it doesn't necessarily have to be fifty-six, but.
Well, I think we have to look at, he's going to have to fill a position.
He has to fill a position.
The way it is, I don't think we need to lower it any.
Not going to.
And, I just want to say, yeah.
Okay.
Is, is the recommendation based with your input also, so I just want to make sure.
Okay.
And you're all.
Thank you for that check. That is a very good, valid point.
Yeah.
So to fill those positions, is it our recommendation then to ask those two positions to go salary based, and set them at the fifty-six nine forty-one? Okay. I have a consensus, it's barely, shall we vote on it? All those in favor, we don't have a motion.
So.
All right, the board. All right, all those in favor, say aye? Aye?
The, the board doesn't meet, won't take action for a month on this. Uh, it would seem like the treasurer could, uh, put a pending salary in the posting.
Yeah, I, we can work out potentially, yeah.
Well, yeah, we can see when he gets, you know, perhaps now.
Right, right, hopefully that'll help a lot. Okay, um, we have the chief deputy clerk. Um, it sounds like that, we have what our attorney's recommended as a safe option, and that is put the chief deputy, if we want to go to salary, we can either leave her at, um, hourly, leave the position at hourly, or set it at a sailor, at a salary at sixty-eight. I'm saying sixty-eight thousand, whatever.
The clerk and I asked for a legal opinion where the salary would be in compliance with law, and the response was yes.
Yes. Salary?
Yes, and sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, whatever.
Oh-five-one.
Oh-five-one.
So basically.
Okay, well, that's.
Based on what we found out, the legal opinion, and based on what this position paid last year, we don't have many options other than to go up above this.
It'll be set till at least the end of twenty-twenty-four. Okay, so that's, so that's my motion.
Is that fair?
That, she said that it was a defendable position.
Yeah, yeah. And I want to make sure, just like with these positions, I worked with the clerk to come up with this. And we based this based on past and the fact that whoever's in that position, forty hours a week has been the standard for that position.
So both of you are, which, uh, sixty-eight or whatever it is, you know?
Sixty-eight, oh-five-one.
He said it was defendable.
Yeah, right.
Okay, well, that's my motion.
I support it.
I just support it, okay. No other discussion, all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed? All right, three-zero. Um, and then that brings us back, do you, um, is there a motion or any action on, um, the request for the register of deeds? So she's at seventy-seven ninety-seven, in three years she'll be at the top, or is there any, um, thought of changing that at all? Again, we, we have options, we can leave it at seven, seven-nine-seven, or go anywhere up if we choose. We can move it up one year, cut out a year, we could go up two years, cut out two years, or go up three years and cut out three years, or let, uh, or let it take its course.
Is the administrator's recommendation seventy-seven ninety-seven?
Well, based on what we found out, if we did that, she would continue with the steps and would hit the top anyway.
So two years, that's, I, that's what I was thinking, was, as long as she's okay with it, just.
I think your concern is making sure you continue to move up on the steps.
Again, your term.
Do take into consideration that the previous register was at the top, and I got moved backwards.
Yeah.
Um. Taking the people out of it.
Right.
That position was paid at the top. Take the people out of it, if she was still here, she would be making that. If, if she then retired during her term, person coming in would.
Would have been up there.
And odds are, if we had this legal opinion knowledge prior to this year, the salary progress, or he's probably would have the same in twenty, in, in the last four years as this going forward.
Okay.
But legally, you do have options on that one.
Okay.
So we could, uh, on this one compromise too, you get halfway there.
If, if you would choose to make that recommendation, it would go to the full board.
What would that amount be, seventy?
Well, if you look at this original pay scale.
Go with the seventy, and then fifteen, twenty-four, she'd give a good rest of them.
Yeah.
And again, you take the person out of it, it, you know, look at the position itself, where it was last term.
No, I understand, I feel for you, but you, you know, when you ran, you knew that, that you were going to start, yeah. I mean, it's not like.
So, in very simple terms, you could keep her at the seventy-seven ninety-seven, and knowing that in year two, three, and four, she hit the top of seventy-five, you could put her at any of those steps above that.
Yeah.
So you could put her at seventy-two four, you could put her at seventy-four zero, or you could put her at seventy-five seven, I'm running these out.
So I would, I would make the motion that we put her at seventy-two four ten.
Okay, support.
Support.
Okay, um.
So that next year I would move up a year?
Yes.
So if the board approved that, your salary in May would be adjusted to seventy-two four ten oh. On January first next year, it'd be seventy-four.
And then my last year would be seventy-five.
Yep.
Plus any adjustments the board makes on top of that.
Correct.
Which I'm guessing will be three-point-five percent.
So you would actually hit that top, because the fifth is actually in the next term?
No, because they're, they're proposing to move me up.
Right, but I meant, if you have, at the end of four, you still have one more year, because you have to start one, two, three?
But if they're moving me to two years.
You'll get to the top in your four year.
So, this will be, so what the motion is to put her in twenty-twenty-two at seventy-two four ten, right?
Yep, that's our motion.
Twenty-twenty-three, seventy-four, and then twenty, twenty-four, seventy-five, seven, plus any adjustments.
Election year, correct.
So at the end of the term, you would be at the, at the top.
Okay, I think we understand where we're at, so all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed? Very good. Okay, so, um, very good work, people. Uh, any other personnel issues?
The administrative assistants, what did you say then?
Um, I think we decided to wait and look at, am I correct, we're going to look at some more of these?
Yeah, it could be just, it'd be nice, but I just want to make sure for the record we have there. So your, your recommendation to board is to, at this time, not just, and review that.
We just hit the three elected.
Four, four, yes, yep.
We did her, and then we did the chief deputies.
Yes.
We're not going to.
And undersheriff.
We're not going to put her in with the chief deputies.
No.
That's the question.
Yeah, that's the question, because she's not, not what Mr. Stoker, um.
Legally, you can.
Well, we legally can, um, and then that's what we were talking about, are we going to open that can of worms? Because who else now would we start picking off? Do we want to look at those all as a package like, like Commissioner Russell recommended? Or do we just want to start picking them off?
Yeah, I guess I look at her, she's like Chet, I'm sure.
Okay, so you did make a recommendation at our first meeting for that stipend for the administrative assistant? We tabled that based on this discussion? So is your recommendation still that she get the stipend? You were not.
Yeah, that's budgeted, correct?
That's budgeted, yes.
Yeah, that's budgeted, she should be getting that, and that's my understanding.
Well, we have that agenda in February, I believe.
Oh, okay.
When the decision was made, we're going to wait till we have this discussion.
Okay.
But this committee did recommend it at our originating, that she be given a state stipend for two thousand dollars, so.
Oh, the stipend or the, um?
Parks and Rec.
From the Parks and Rec.
Rec. Was it a weekly or monthly, or?
Because she's salary, you cannot go forward, you can legally recognize past efforts and give a stipend a couple of times a year to hourly employees.
She, she's hourly.
And make hourly employee know she get a stipend on top of that.
Does she turn in overtime for the parks, I mean, it's.
Well, she turns in one time sheet, that's everything's.
But she said she's salary?
No, she's out.
Oh, he just said she's salary.
He did.
Okay.
He missed focus, she's an hourly decision.
Okay.
And the answer over here is yes.
The only issue I have with giving her the stipend is if she's also turning in those hours in overtime, that's paying.
She has few overtime hours, she does come in a lot of times early.
Right.
She's hard to accumulate overtime, and it's, she's been with her heart, I mean, it's her.
Well, yeah, the reality is she does a lot of work at home, doesn't charge us more than, so. The, this committee's recommendation originally was to recommend that stipend for two thousand dollars.
But that was the, and that was at the retro or moving forward?
You cannot go forward for hourly, you cannot give a stipend to the hourly.
But we could set a.
Because you can't over, you can't bypass the overtime.
Thinking that it was.
It has to be for retroactive.
For retro, that's, yes.
I, I believe it was clarified in the budget and for twenty-twenty-two, um, when the, the, the weekly stipend was discussed at your budget work session. When Chet got his legal opinion, I believe, the hourly employee would have their thirty-five hours that they would turn in. And then, let's say you decided that you wanted to do it quarterly, for the work, you can then pay the stipend. So you, let's say if it's thirty-five hundred dollars, you'd split that into the four, so her work from January one to March thirty-first. And she would receive the pay then for the, that's that, so it has to be after.
Yes.
Correct.
Gotcha, well, okay, so I make, I make a motion that, is that, we're not doing that now? So my motion would be is that we need, we need to do that.
You actually, this committee would approve this.
So we would do it in April, she would be paid from January to April for this extra work that she is doing.
Or January, March, yep.
Well, I recommend it, uh, for six months, to do it twice versus four times.
So then you'd be waiting.
So I'm the same thing, I just said six months.
Okay, but if it's in the budget, are, are, the consensus is that that's for twenty-twenty-two, that's what we're doing? Okay, okay, good.
We haven't then, so that's what, that's what he's looking for.
Yeah, I recommend this board approve that. Hour employees, legally, the fewer stipends.
Gotcha.
There's no issues if you make it retro, but you can't guarantee it, there's no guarantee going forward, you can't say, we're going to do this twice a year.
Gotcha.
Every time you do a stipend, it has to be independent of past. You can't say, you can't pass a motion saying, we're going to give her for the last six months, by the way, we're going to give you six months, six months from now, another stipend.
So in June, do we, is it actionable?
That's what I'm wondering, I think, when you asked about that with the legal opinion, was it something that you could direct that, per the budget of such and such, the work performed from January to June thirtieth will be paid out to such employee at this amount?
Even if you have, let's say, May, it does have to be just for this year, it could be for past years.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wanted.
So if you're doing this in, say, May, for six months, you could acknowledge the extra efforts for the past six months, even though that one month was in the past budget year. The money's budgeted in this year.
Because we have a calendar budget, I, I just think it's clean to do it twenty-two.
So I'm saying legally.
Yeah, I get it, okay.
But you can't in the motion say, we're going to give you a six-month stipend, and we're going to give you six months, six more in December.
Okay.
Each stipend has to be individual.
We'll have to make sure that we get, yes, I'll send.
So are you making a motion, or are you, is there a consensus?
I'm not, I think there's a consensus that that'll happen in June, that this will come to us in June to do a January through.
Well, I will make a recommendation in June, if you wish to endorse it.
Right.
You actually did, at our first meeting in February, endorse it.
Since it is.
Yeah, you were here, but the vote was two-zero to endorse it. And I put it on the agenda, but I asked to table it until we get discussion about salary. So if you're not going to adjust your salary, I'm going to put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Knowing that this committee recommended it.
Yes, okay. Yep, so nothing's changed from that recommendation.
Is that fair, summary?
Okay. All right, anything else?
Any other special meeting?
Okay, any other topics or next meeting date?
I was thinking, it'd probably be helpful if Mr. Stoker could participate in our meeting with the full board. I think it's helpful having him here, it's a cost to us.
Oh.
But I, I think it'd be helpful for the other commissioners, because this is a very complex issue.
Okay, yeah.
The three of you.
Sure, he can be there, that's. Sure, he can be there, that's.
The other ones, if, if I was a part of this meeting, if I was just a commissioner, I'd be very confused by it with us.
Right, he may. Um, there, there may be other questions or likely to be other questions. So that's a very good, um, very good point.
You're still in there.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm just checking off everything on your agenda here. What I did not hear is after you got done with the Register of Deeds, did you want the Treasurer and the Clerk to be set at one salary?
The Treasurer, no, not the Clerk.
I didn't hear anything about that.
Meaning is, is this, I think what you're saying.
There was no action.
Right, are you, are you adapting this as your new wage schedule, you know, like a motion to adapt this wage schedule that's proposed?
So basically, we're moving down the steps.
Right. I didn't hear anything.
Oh, yeah, we. Can we find that one out? I just shifted papers. Yes, that's the attorney's recommendation that we go to that.
So in simple terms, we could use this, we'll adjust the Register of Deeds to what you are recommending and basically recommend this with the adjustment for the Register of Deeds.
Yes.
Correct?
That, that's what I'm asking. The steps don't come into play for the Clerk and the Treasurer's position until twenty twenty-five. Because both positions are at the max, so if there's a vacancy.
So we would eliminate, so we would adopt this.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the limite, Treasure Deeds.
And the Register of Deeds is still on a step for the three years.
You would have your own line here. There would be no start.
You would have to start being the two year, the three year.
Yeah, we'll adjust.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a step. It's just during budget time. It's going to have to be noted what the step would be to get that budget in, plus whatever normal adjustment would happen.
Okay, so yes, I would recommend we, we adapt this wage schedule.
So basically, you limit the steps.
Limiting steps, correct.
Actually, we got a lot done in an hour and a half to do.
So is, is there support that this, our consensus that this is what we're, let's do it by motion, take it to our board. Recommend to the board commissioners to adapt this wage schedule as, as discussed. With the changes. There's support? Support, consensus for it?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Okay, very good. We're moving forward. To May meeting, all of these will come to the May, May?
Target.
All of these will come to May executive?
And I'll either get this over or this pass here.
Okay.
So I think it would be helpful for all commissioners.
The, you know, item five of the other topics, next meeting date, is it? Would it be possible to have the adminis, have a schedule of meeting for, for sometime in, in late May? And have the administrator come to just review any of these other ones that he thinks need to be looked at?
Well. I think we. Should. Either in May, we may make, perhaps May and make a recommendation as we move into budget because we're going to be moving into budget really soon. Or do we want to look at them at a special meeting in budget with the whole board there? We can do it. There's some different ways we can do it. So, and I really don't know how many more, you know, there's. What we haven't touched yet, right? Temporary office assistant, the executive assistant, look for the stipend. I know the senior services coordinators come up in the past. Uh, or director. Coordinators, those are probably, they're to be finance director, we looked at last night. Um, Human Resources Director, we set that. Planning, so planning director, life basin directors, kind of. We're in the changeover there with our interim. So that one's already set, I would say. So I don't know, whatever you think. If you'd like to do that, try to. Do you want to look at? All of them or a couple of them or what do you have?
We've been reminded several times that, that looking at all of them opens up a can of worms, but I wondered if. I'm worried about a couple of the court ones. I think we might have some issues there.
And out of fairness to the staff, we should look at all of them. Now, we could keep them safe. Doesn't mean we have to adjust them. But fairness to everyone, I don't want to, you know, the court, the judge here last time talked about her situation. I know at some point the drain commissioner is going to come in and talk about this incredible salary of fifteen thousand dollars. And how much work he's done. And so you can make a case that our planning directors substantially underpaid.
You know, I think we've doubled that.
I, I.
That the, the drain commissioner's salary has doubled.
The problem, and this is not unique to Little County, every county's struggling, like John pointed out, he has one applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, Grand Trench County either did or will shortly, they told us, give a, on top of what the unit agreed, a five percent raise across board for every single position.
Yeah.
Because they're dealing with, I mean, if, every county I talk to is dealing with these issues. It's not unique. And there's no magical way of doing it. And so I think we're trying to do the best we can. We're trying to be fair. We, we're, we're starting off with the legal issues. So we're doing.
What I want to look at, I guess what I like to look at, and I wouldn't mind looking at comparable counties and what they're paying. But it, it gets difficult because we, we do have such a wage and benefit package up here, such a valuable wage and benefit package. I think that, that weighs in. I know, I know it's difficult sometimes for new employees to, they want more dollars instead of better health insurance, they.
And you got to go again, I don't know. Yeah, we got a great package, but you still got to put food on the table.
Well, I understand that. And that's what I'm saying.
Those days are over.
I, I, I disagree because.
Especially when you talk about Florida House. It's just, it all connects. Pretty soon, we won't even have a high school up here because no one lives here, who has kids, because they can't afford.
And. It's even bigger than that.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
We're not the only employer in the Long County. So very same thing happens, you know, businesses do that to start paying more to get those employees, that they have to help. How is their employees like they're doing there? We're, we're.
Well, I think we have to ask the employees and listening employees maybe what they want. Maybe they'll have a little less health benefits, more.
As, as a gentleman said last night, though, you know, and then I don't, I, I, I can't discount our benefit package here. It does not cost our employees anything out of pocket. Sometimes I don't think employees looking at the wage, though, not only the wage, not even thinking what, they won't have to be out of pocket for this premium health insurance. Where one incident could put them far behind what they'd be making if we were five dollars more an hour or ten dollars more an hour. One, one health incident. And I could talk about hours about that because I don't get the county insurance. I can tell you what it costs out of pocket without having the county insurance sometime. Because it's huge. And not to mention that, our retirement. I see the same thing in another industry I'm involved in. New employees, they just want big wages up front because they like boats and toys and houses and. And pools, I mean, pools at their houses, et cetera, and not really thinking that, gee, in thirty short years, I'm going to retire.
But that goes back, that's, that's an individual, individual.
Absolutely. I agree.
We agree on that.
But.
All three remind me that you have come.
Seven, seven minutes. All right.
We didn't give it an hour.
You can, we can schedule another date if we need to, but I do want to see some, I'd have to see some comparables too, so.
Would, would the administrator be able to? To bring this? Back with some comparables on, on positions, you think?
If you're giving towards the MMA.
And definitely even for.
We will try.
Yeah.
I, I know the Conso, well, that was northwest, the surveys from the positions. I know MAC has some, you know, once again. If you look at numbers, make, at least have a dialogue. Yes, if you want some meeting towards end of May, we'll try to do the best we can. So this way, the board can deal with these issues up front. And I know we got a lot done here this morning. And then look at, so if you want to set a date in May, and if we have the data, we're ready to go and cancel. But at least, I know it's tough to get a date. So if you want to set a date in May, sometimes.
We could try to set a date in May right now or the first part of June, whatever works for everybody. Did you put your calendar away, Rick? You know, like Wednesday, the first of June would probably be a good date for me.
We've been maybe.
We're already going to be here for parks. Does that work if you try?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the first of June?
When's your call, honey?
June third.
Is that today you're talking?
No, June first, she suggested.
Looking at Wednesday, we have parks at three o'clock. We could. Do it that very same day if that works sometimes.
I mean, at least looking at two hours.
Well, if you want to start, if you have parks at three, you can start at one.
One, do a two hour?
June one. So June one.
Yeah.
To the Wednesday set.
Yes.
At one P M. Right?
Yes, at one o'clock P M.
And we'll try to get compared. We'll try to do the best we can.
Yeah.
And if it cuts close, we don't, we can decide whether or not we're going to.
Yeah, if we, if we don't have the information or whatever, then we'll. Okay, sounds good. All right. Uh, public, uh, any other comments, discussion items, comments, anything else we, yes, Laura?
Uh, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We have a committee meeting, a Parks Committee meeting at one thirty at the same day. So if you do hold that, I'll have to hold it somewhere with different.
Okay. Now, it's not a committee meeting for either Commissioner Roberts or myself?
No, it's Veronica's family.
Veronica's family, okay, yeah. We can, we'll meet, yeah, we'll have a meet somewhere else. All right. Thank you, Lauren, for that. All right, so, um, okay, nothing else? Uh, public, any public comment? All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.